We lost footprint because we had to step back or we lost square footage because we had to step back. Are we creating a? I know legally, that's just tough luck for them, but what what are the number of times this has actually been applied? Or is this us trying to realize that the reason it hasn't been applied is because nobody's developing because it's too hard?
Yeah, did we? Because I want to say, I don't know if it's the same project or one we had in the last year or two where somebody else, some other applicant complained about this setback requirement and maybe I don't know if it's the same one or different.
So I'm just wondering if it's only been beneficial because of historic preservation and the scale of the facade on that street front? Or if there's anyone else that has been subject to this?
I can't think of one in in the ITOD zone where that's been an issue on the same block as the development that we're going to look at next in the next item. That was in the downtown zone, so that step back didn't apply. And that might have been a thing that helps them want to do that in that.
The development on on six hundred south and one hundred west is a pro zone. Is that so that they didn't have the same requirements? Because they don't have a set a step back on their upper floors, right?
Yeah, that pro zone doesn't have that same requirement as the ITOD.
So that seems like an argument in favor of getting rid of it as well. If somebody has to create a special zone to circumvent the requirements.
Yeah, it really, the pros and cons to it. In this case, there's not really a lot of pros. Like I said, if we had narrow streets and the ITOD zone allowed much taller building heights, then I think we would be looking at wanting something like that potentially. But with our street widths and the building height being a hundred feet maximum in that zone, we don't see a benefit to it. It just does create more development hurdles that limit the amount of density and things that we fit in the city and the areas that we've identified where we want that density.
Okay, no.
Thank you.
I know that makes sense for like University Avenue, Freedom Boulevard. Do we feel the same way about the other smaller streets like a hundred west or five hundred south?
They're pretty wide down there. There, there's a lot of room. It maybe it doesn't feel like it because there's also a lot of on-street parking at angles.
There's a lot of.
And there's not a whole lot of defined sidewalk and curb and gutter. But I think once you get the improvements made with new development, there'll be plenty of space to make a U-turn with a covered wagon like the streets were designed.
I just to know, like, I mean, there, there are buildings more than a hundred feet in downtown Provo, right? Like.
In the downtown zones, like.
Like the Wells Fargo and the.
Those potentially could be. I know a recent one in the downtown zone will be Highland or Highline Square. It's right by the rec center on Freedom and five hundred north. I think that one's very similar to the one we're looking at tonight is.
How tall is the one in that pro zone? The Mill, Mill Race?
Mill Race. I think that zone allows for.
Six hundred, I see someone.
No, sixty-one, six stories.
I'm sorry.
We're playing charades.
Sorry. So that's the center building you see there in the pro zone. That's a six-story building.
Which is how many feet?
Less than a hundred.
So it sounds like when we're capped at a hundred feet, at least we don't really need this step back.
Yeah, I don't believe that it serves a good purpose in this zone. And that's why we're recommending that it goes away. I think to help maybe answer part of your question around the peripheral of the zone, we have a transitional standards where the setbacks increase. So even in the downtown zone, when you're when the zone like this is adjacent to a residential zone, then there's our transitional standards in a different chapter that come into play to help mitigate any concerns in those areas.
So just out of curiosity, is from a planner point of view, there kind of a number of hours sunlight you'd like to see a street get? That kind of, is there any sort of standard like that? When is it too dark, etc.?
Well, I don't, I don't know if I have a specific number. Like I said, here in Utah with our white streets, it's really not a, not an issue. We have our street tree canopy that that has worked well in our downtown zone because our white streets. Sorry, I don't know that I have a specific number for you on hours of daylight that I know of the last decade.
Just curious because I just ran the math and theoretically with two hundred-foot buildings on each side, you'd get on an eighty-foot road, you'd get three hours of sunlight in a day. And so on a north-south street, right, where the sun's just crossing it. So I'm just curious, is that enough? Is that not enough? What do we think about that?
Did you say two hundred feet?
So it's an eighty-foot wide road with a hundred-foot buildings on each side, kind of worst-case scenario. You get three hours of sunlight.
And we have trees that are on, they're constantly in the shade. You know, the north face of those buildings and those, I did not see that issue come up.
I wanted to say this. There's also something to be said for, I guess, on the opposite end of that with the sunlight. Sort of the ideal enclosure with, if we're making these zones like walk, walkable friendly, the most safe feeling is like a one-to-one street to building ratio. But that also allows for some cooling in the summer. So you might not get the all the sunlight, but it also keeps the streets cooler and a lot more comfortable for people to exist in during the day and have it be that walkable neighborhood, which I think is sort of what this density is meant to promote. So I think don't want to bring up Europe as people have a problem with it. But in Paris, you know, the cities has a lot of their buildings are about five or six stories, really similar proportions to this. But they have much narrow streets. So what it's worth.
Any other questions for staff member, right? Okay, thank you, Mr. Right. Okay. Go ahead and open this up for public comment. Public hearing portion. Please come forward, state your name. You'll be limited to two minutes. If you're not lined up to show you're going to speak, well, the applicant, I thought it was the city. Oh, boy. I got, I'm, oh, Mr. Peterson.
You know, I, David Peterson, I don't really have any additional comments. I'm just happy to answer your questions, yeah. We're grateful that the staff is in favor of this and we think it's a good addition to the code. Thank you.
All right, yeah, I don't. Okay, another applicant, if you have any questions for him, we can recall him. Okay. Public comment. I see none. Go ahead and close public comment. Yeah, commissioners to discuss amongst ourselves. I'm, I'm kind of in agreement. I think that I, in the summer, I walk on the sides of the street that have the shade from the buildings. I gravitate towards those. Anyone else? Commissioner Jensen?
I feel like this isn't allowed, this isn't required in the adjacent downtown zone. The DT one at least. And this is what we wanted. We wanted our ITOD zone to be a high-density, maximal usage in the space. I feel like it meets what it was intended to be. So maybe that's not our goal for every spot in Provo's commercial areas, but this is the spot we decided was going to be that way. So for that reason, I don't have a problem with removing the requirement. I like on page three of the staff report. It's in response to whether this is the, it meets the public purpose for the amendment or what the public purpose is. And it says to encourage new development in the ITOD that can be more affordable by more efficient use on limited land areas in the zone. So the more we can get in that space, the better we're making, better use we're making of our resources and packing it closest to where the amenities are that we built it for. That's just me.
Any other discussion, commissioners? I'm not seeing anyone, so let's all entertain a motion. Mr. Newton.
Yes, I would propose we send a positive recommendation to the municipal council for item number four. David Peterson requests an own next text amendment to the interim transit-oriented development zone, building height section fourteen point two-three point oh-nine oh of the Provo City Code to remove the building's step-back requirement at the fifth floor as citywide application.
Any discussion on motion? I, I do want to bring up for the sake of transparency, I, I do know Mr. Peterson. In my previous employment, we used him as a engineering services consultant, engineering consultant. I'm no longer with that company and have no feelings or loyalty towards them. This is a different project, so I, I don't feel there's a conflict, but I do know him and recognize him. For the sake of transparency. Any second on the motion?
All second.
Right, let's have a roll call.
Hi.
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 All right, the recommendation for approval to municipal council passes nine zero. Items. Items five and, can we read five and six together? Okay. Oh, I'm really sorry, Mr. Right. Can we take a five-minute recess? Just, we'll come back, just five-minute break real quick. Thanks. All right, I just want to thank the public. I know you're here waiting, especially when you're last off the agenda, but we're going to get to you, Mr. Finch. Yeah, thanks for allowing us the time to have a break. Yeah, we'll go ahead. The five minutes is up. Mr. Right presenting on, I'm going to need to finish reading these in, huh? Item number five. David Peterson requests concept plan approval for a new hundred twenty-nine unit apartment building in the ITOD zone located at one fifty-six west, five hundred south downtown neighborhood. And item number six, David Peterson requests a zone map amendment for two parcels from DT one, general downtown to the ITOD zone in order to have all parcels in the same zone to construct a new apartment building located at one fifty-six west, five hundred south downtown neighborhood. Mr. Right.
Thanks. See if I can jump to the next slide. So here's the property highlighted here is that the applicant is proposing their hundred twenty-nine unit apartment building in the ITOD zone. Here's the parcel or the, the three parcels showing the footprint of the building and landscaping. And the structure takes up the majority of this parcel. The applicant has agreed to put in a pet amenity space within the landscaped area to help with that need that we've seen in these type of developments. So since that's not part of the code requirements, that would be part of a development agreement that would ensure that that pet amenity space is included in the, in the landscaped area. And that's something that they were willing to do. Here's the proposed architectural renderings. These ones here that we're looking at are updated from the ones that are in your staff report to reflect the suggested changes that the designer view committee gave. So they've made those changes and I've included them here. The designer view committee gave a positive approval on the architecture and the materials of this development. Here's the elevation drawings showing the overall height of eighty-four feet, which complies with the height requirements in ITOD zone. The part of the height requirements that we looked at in the last item require that step back. So their proposed concept plan shows it as though the step-back requirement has been removed. And so the approval that we recommend on this would be subject to the city council approving the item for the text amendment to, to remove the step-back requirement. So this project is showing it as though that was approved. Along the street frontage, the, the first levels are parking along the street frontage. Those parking levels would be blocked from fuel on the public street with facade there showing amenity space and lobby entrance and things into the building as well as the entrance down to the parking garage. Okay. And then here for item six, the rezone portion. So it's these two parcels highlighted in red. They're currently in the downtown DT one zone that they're requesting that those be rezoned to match the parcel below it in the ITOD zone. So there's the image of the zoning map. The purple is the ITOD zone and that orange is the DT one zone. Our general plan map is designating this area as a transit-oriented development designation, which the ITOD zone that they're requesting this rezone for complies with that. So there wouldn't be any need to change the general plan map. And then here are some images, property in its current condition. So these would be demolished, the parcels would be combined into one to make way for the new development that we've looked at today. So staff's recommendation for the concept plan, like I mentioned, subject to the zone change and the development agreement recommends that those things be forwarded. Or sorry, the concept plan would be your approval with those conditions. And the staff recommendation for the rezone is also to afford a positive recommendation to the city council for that rezone with a development agreement that includes the pet amenities that discussed in elevations, materials in the concept plan that we've looked at today. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on items five or item six.
Right, any questions for staff member, right? Commissioner Jensen?
It looks like the ingress and egress is all going out onto five hundred south. Is, is that okay to only have that one access?
Yes, that, that that point right there on five hundred south would be the ingress egress for the development. There wouldn't be another one. And it's been reviewed and, and it's fine with our.
And that meets, that meets engineering standards. I was under the impression that a certain number of, of units would require more than one access point. That's totally fine. Mr. Day?
David Day of Public Works. Yeah, that would be sufficient for this project.
Okay, sorry to make you walk up just for that. Thank you. I was, where's my other question? I'm concerned, I, that's for something else. Okay, the other one was the downtown street scape, streetscape standards will be required at this location. So just to be clear, that is a design review process for all of the downtown neighborhood? Or is it just the downtown zones? It's like the ITOD zone is subject to those standards as well?
Yeah, so the streetscape standards, there's a, a map in that document that highlights some of the ITOD zones, some of the downtown zones. This property would be included in those. So a project plan, we would make sure that all of those are applied.
Okay, then the other one I just have, I don't know that there's much we can do because it sounds like they've met the zoning requirements. But if you look at the footprint, it's pretty much the footprint of the lot. This is a huge building with very, very little setbacks. I'm guessing that those are all within the parameters that are allowed.
Yeah, the lot coverage. And there's a lot of coverage in the ITOD zone there.
I just worry, I know we just, we just said we liked the idea of not having the, the step-back requirement up above, but I don't know that we realized what the setback was. And we learned our lesson the hard way with other developments in Provo that are right up against a sidewalk, right up against a street. So are we going to regret? I don't know of any other eighty-four-foot-tall building in Provo, let alone right up against the street. So I just wanted to, do you want to speak to that or comfort us with a happy thought about that?
So, yeah, we do have others that are, you know, seven stories. We've had, I mentioned earlier, Highline or Highline Square, seven-story.
How tall is that, though? Is it really?
It's probably pretty comparable, I would imagine, to this. I don't know the exact height on it, but I know that it was seven stories.
Okay.
But yeah, lot coverage there in the ITOD zone, there's, there's not a requirement for lot coverage. So they are allowed to cover the site. Building height in the zone is a hundred feet and they're eighty-four feet. So they're below the maximum height that the zone allows.
Can somebody who's familiar with it, for example, I'm just thinking of another imposing project. The one that's in the CMU zone on nine hundred east and seven hundred north. Does somebody know how high that building is and what the setbacks of that project are so we can get an idea of scale? Any staff member?
This, this is something we've asked before and been told that that's been corrected. So this is.
Right, it has been, that's for the CMU zone. So I'm just trying to visualize in my head what the, what the scale of this will be to the pedestrian on the street based on a ten-foot setback.
Because the one on nine east is less than a ten-foot setback, right?
I believe so.
The nine east project went through when you could have zero setback, which is what it has. It's the result of that project that we increased the setbacks to a minimum of ten and a maximum of twenty.
Okay, so it won't feel as imposing because that's already been corrected. That I just wanted to make sure because it is a very, very tall building. Do you happen to know about how tall that one is so we can get an idea of height, what that height looks like? Okay.
Just to note, that was Director Pepperoni.
Bill Pepperoni. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Go ahead, Commissioner DeSoto.
So we talked about, there's just one, one entrance onto five hundred south, is that right? And that's, this is a pedestrian entrance? This is a, you could walk into it? And then this is the car?
Yeah, there's the, on the right-hand side, there's the vehicle entrance and then there's pedestrian entrances.
Okay. Second question related to that, kind of the setbacks, the footprint. Because of this zone is what it is, are you anticipating more buildings of this kind of similar scale to be nearby? And that is why it kind of makes sense to only have the entrance on the front? Is that like the logic of it is what I want to know?
Yeah, so I mean, on the same block, back here, so on this block here, on the right-hand side of, of this development and also to the north of it, that's where the Fairbanks apartment project that came in recently will fill up that space. So on this block, you have Carson Corner on the corner of Freedom and five hundred south. That's a, a fair ten-plus years development. In that back corner, one hundred west, five hundred south, that's a currently vacant parcel that wasn't acquired and put into either one of these two projects. So. Acquired and put into either one of these two projects, so I'm not sure what will ultimately happen on that one. But yeah, the zoning would allow for an adjacent property to to do a similar type development.
And is there, because I'm still learning, um, is there anything currently that? Would encourage sort of like walkways between these buildings, because we have really big blocks. And again, if we're going for pedestrian friendly, sort of denser areas. Where people getting this outside, is there any sort of encouragement for that currently?
Um, it would be something I think we would allow if that were a desire from a developer to do something like that. But I don't, we don't have a requirement.
But it's not required to.
To break up a block, yeah.
Any other questions? I don't see any other questions. We'll go ahead with the applicant, Mr. Peterson, if you'd come up, fifteen minutes.
I don't have any additional presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, the architect is also here. If you have any architectural questions.
I I'm not seeing any.
Great, oh, go ahead.
Um, it says there was a neighborhood meeting held on June twenty second. And people ask questions about certain things, and it says those present supported the project, I'm just wondering. Were there two people there, were there fifteen people there, just to give us an idea of how many members of the public weighed in?
The attendance that meeting, I, what was there, twenty people, thirty people, something like that?
Oh, wow.
Okay.
Yeah, so I got the room, that room that's right across was was mostly, it was about half full.
Okay, so, thank you, that just helps me to realize that people did actually weigh in and see it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Did everyone get their chance, we'll, we can recall them if their questions come up. I'm not sure which district the downtown neighborhood is in, but if there's any district representatives present, I want to give them an opportunity to speak. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and. Move to the public, open hearing to public comments. Is there anyone from the public here to speak, please come forward, state your name residence. Time is now yours. Okay, I'm not seeing any public comments for this. We'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the meeting. And we'll discuss among the commissioners. I'll give a few opening comments, I. I don't, I I know we, we, the ninth east, seven hundred north building has come up a lot and. I don't know if I necessarily share the same concerns with it being so close to the street. Probably most unpopular opinion here, but. I don't, I don't share those concerns, but like with this one being close, it it's not the same, right, it's a different foot setback. I like the landscaping plan that shown. Um, I love how. They're committed to their, their law, that they provided all their parking. In their. On their footprint and. And having to have three levels of it. I really like that, I think it's. A good model for for what could be done in the I Todd zone. Um, and. We've had arguments and discussion and debate around parking reductions. And. I don't know, well, I guess it remains to be seen if we still have those concerns with parking reductions, this is one that. Staff has has recommended. Uh, but go ahead, is any other commissioners wanna speak to this? Commissioner Jensen.
Um, we haven't talked very much about the zone requests, the zone change request, but if you are, don't. Have a positive opinion of it, I was just gonna share my thoughts about it, originally I was thinking, why are we rezoning it? Wouldn't it be easier to rezone one property to the DT one instead of two properties to the I Todd, but if you look at the map, it makes really. Fluid sense to go the other direction, because those two properties are really small. So, um, the map to me makes more sense to do exactly what they requested, it's not like it's a a gap in zoning. It connects very well, and the general plan on the next page. Shows that whole block enclosed in that, that objective type development, so. As to the zone change, I think that that makes logical sense and I don't have any problems with it. Um, as to the development, the concept plan. I like that the amenities are contained within the center of the development, I think that makes for a nice community for the people who live there. It doesn't seem like little park strips out in front invite recreation, but a nice enclosed area would perhaps. I like that this development, though it's huge scale. Um, is going to improve the surrounding neighborhood, the curb, the gutter, the sidewalk, if you look at those pictures. Even though there's things there that are sort of being used already, it's not the type of place. You wanna walk down the street and I feel like that will give a gradual improvement to the area. Um, I have concerned about. How the occupancy, even though they say family occupancy, I don't know how you regulate that, so that worries me a little bit. The only thing I wanted also to say that was maybe negative was if. Sandy, if you can go to the slide that has the renderings with the grass around it. That one, um, I just want to point out to the commissioners. That that is not realistic because. The footprint of the building is basically the footprint of the lot, so anything you see here in green is most likely somebody else's property. So right now it might be vacant and might be idealized with grass, but it will be closer. To what's around it, there'll be things around it, so don't be. Don't be persuaded by the green carpet that looks so lush and happy, but it's not astroturf, I'd like to point out, that is definitely grass. So.
To that, if I could interrupt to that point, Mister Wright, this rendering is, it's different than the landscape plan that they submitted, correct? Yeah, it is different than the rendering, right?
But beyond that, I was just trying to point out that the green space is not actually their property.
Right, it's, the rendering shows a lot more.
Yeah.
Green space there than.
And I like that Mister Wright pointed out that the the property to the west, um, that Carson's Corner, is that like three stories, two stories? It's not very tall. And so that sort of breaks up the scale a little bit too, that that's a relatively new development and it's not eight stories or seven stories tall. So that kind of gives a nice setback and a natural setback there.
I agree, and I guess if if there were to be developed something on the other side, I guess on the east side. That was tall, we'd have, uh, we'd know exactly how how much sunlight those, those plants would get, but, um, I think this is also a really nice. Um, addition to this area and I like the transparency of the pedestrian entrance and it's. Pretty inviting, I feel like imagining this being, like you said, built up with other, a variety of buildings will be really nice. It's a great start to adding that variety to a space that should be hopefully walkable and inviting.
Okay, if there's no other comment, does someone? Want to put forward a motion on items, we'll read them in separately. Yeah, the zone map amendment. Just again, like I don't, I agree with Commissioner Jensen, I. Those two parcels in the middle of the whole block, they they make more sense to be. Attached, annexed to the I Todd than stay as D two one. But does anyone want to put forward a motion on item number five, concept plan approval?
Does anyone have problems with it, like are there too many of one type of unit, not enough of another, do you not like the? Parking layout or the landscaping that's proposed or? Are they, this is concept plan, so they can still change the configuration of two bedroom, one bedroom studio, right? Obviously, the number of units or occupants can't change very much because of parking.
What?
Are they asking, they're not asking for a parking exception that's not already naturally granted, correct?
Correct, yeah, they meet their parking requirement based off the unit type that they've shown, so if they change that, then we'd have to.
Okay.
Look back at that. There's a development agreement being proposed that would go with the rezone to the city council. As part of that, the concept plan is included in that development agreement, so. If there's changes to it, they'd have to go back to the city council to get development agreement changed to make those changes, so. Unless there's, yeah, a big need to change something like that, I think it's, it's a good project that. Needs the parking requirements and fits within the the zone as they've shown it in the concept plan, I think the. Project plan will be able to move forward if those other items are approved by the city council.
Mister Wright, I'm I'm curious what staff thinks, I'm, this is not necessarily related to this. Project, but what's the stomach? Of development services for a higher maximum height? Something taller. I, because I've always, some, some parts of me think like, like Provo is. In my mind, a clear number two city in Salt Lake and in Utah and. If you look at the growth projections in the next thirty years, the little. They're huge, still, I don't know how, but they're huge. And I, sometimes I feel we're shortchanging zoning a little bit with the capping maximum height at one hundred.
So before I answer the height question, let me just address Commissioner Jensen's concern about occupancy. It's very rare for us to have occupancy problems in a building like this that has central management. As much as we really want to see individual ownership and owner occupancy. Those are the units where we have occupancy problems, because one individual buyer buys the unit. And decides to maximize profits and puts as many people in as they can. But a managed building like this, an apartment building, it's very rare, person of occupancy violations.
Thank you.
On the issue of building height, it's been coming up more and more recently, um, some property that's been proposed to redevelopment, they've. Asked if staff will consider increasing the hundred foot limit in the DT one zone. Um, there's some places where we've, where we've already done that, the Mill Race was approved for more than a hundred feet, in fact, I think they were approved for two hundred feet. So I think the ball's rolling in that direction. We already don't have any limitations on density in these zones, your limitation on density is the building height and your ability to park it. Those factors have this the biggest impact on the number of units. My guess is, is that we'll end up increasing building height for the exact reasons that you've just proposed, if you think about it. Once you identify property that's ripe for higher density, to do other things that then push that density back down. Is probably working against your best interest, right? So I'm sure you'll probably see requests in the near future to increase that height.
Thank you for taking time for that, I appreciate it. Any other discussion?
This is a massive digression, but you started it. When I was in Tempe, a few months ago, I slammed on, I went swimming on a rooftop pool, fifteen story building, it was incredibly cool, and I was like. This is what downtown Tempe is what downtown Provo needs to become.
College town, right?
Yeah, but they've just completely changed a lot of their downtown zoning requirements to allow these like really cool, modern, tall buildings, and it's, it's a really awesome place.
This goes back to our discussion about ratios and and thinking that through and and hoping for variety in these developments. Exactly for the reason some people want modern, some people want something more traditional and a little smaller, and and that should all be available. I think. To make that richness.
I agree, agree.
Okay, so that's a question. Is there anything about this project that anybody doesn't like that we want to talk about? I think, I, I, I think I'm getting head nods in the fact that zoning. We're okay with the zone request, so are we okay with the concept plan that goes along with the zone request? If there's anything that people don't like about it, now's the time to say this is what we want to negotiate, or this is what we want to put as a condition or something like that.
I kind of, I I feel like it's a, it's a really great development, I think this rezone makes sense and it's not like it's. You're going from like a really restrictive zone to a very liberal zone and there it's, um, if anything downtown is maybe a bit more liberal, so I think. Makes a lot of sense, yeah, it's cool development.
Uh, just to note, that development agreement hasn't been signed or anything yet. Uh, so yeah, now is the time if we. Feel, if we feel there are things that should go on a development agreement, now would be the time to bring them up.
Just putting this out there, um, I'm wondering. With the concerns we've talked about, about parking, that this seems like it's great, they meant their parking, I wonder if as in other places, they will have. Extra and if there would be an amenability to do some cooperative, um, parking sharing in the case there is extra parking. So that they could provide parking, potentially, you know, excess parking to other. Entities in the future, if it densifies to the point of needing it, I wonder if that's something.
Yeah.
Would be useful.
Applicant, could you, could you address that, do you anticipate there being spare parking, extra parking?
I actually would say there probably won't end up being enough. Uh, I think we've seen that whenever we give a, an adjustment in parking, they end up not having enough.
I, I don't know, I, I, I think when, when we have the parking. Supervisor here before, she, she brought up some.
That people just aren't using the parking, they're just parking somewhere else.
Occupancy.
Okay.
Go ahead, Director Pepperoni.
Uh, I don't believe we have anything, uh, that would prohibit them from using any excess parking for some other surrounding use. Um, if they're meeting the requirement, if if their people are parking on site and they have an abundance, they have more than they need. I can't think of anything in our code that would prohibit them from being able to use those spaces for other people. I'd be hesitant to put some kind of requirement on to that effect, but I'd let the market do what the market wants to do.
Yeah, I want to make sure, Commissioner Jensen, if you have some other concerns, like by all means, bring them up, uh, so we can. Discuss some more.
I don't have other concerns, I just wanted to make sure that other voices were being heard.
Commissioner Rolene, did you, any comments? Sorry. Okay, I'm not seeing any further discussion, does anyone want to? Bring forth a motion and just note the. Condition on item number five of the. Development agreement approvals.
I'll make a motion, make a motion that the planning commission approve the. Concept plan requested by David Patterson for a new hundred twenty nine unit apartment building in the I Todd. Uh, zone located at one fifty six west, five hundred south. Subject to zone change and development agreement approvals by the city council.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Was there, was the, was city asking for a condition of like the ped amenity too?
Part of the.
It's part of the development agreement?
So that will be part of the development agreement, which will be part of the rezone.
Is there a second on the motion? Okay, we got Commissioner Newton and Commissioner Jensen. Yeah, I have second and third, uh, let's go ahead and vote, item number five. What does my commissioner Newton?
Hi.
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 Item number five. Uh, approval. Uh, passes. Uh, vote nine zero. Should I ever read that in?
I'll make a motion for item six.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, um, move that we forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council for the approval of the requested rezon from DT one to I-Tod. For the two parcels, uh, located at one fifty-six west five hundred south, I should probably read this whole thing in. David Peterson requests a zone map amendment for two parcels from DT one to the I-Tod zone in order to have all parcels in the same zone to construct a new apartment building located at one fifty-six west five hundred south in the downtown neighborhood. I'll second it.
Uh, any discussion on the motion?
That would be with the development agreement, so.
All right, uh, let's load on it, uh, Commissioner Newton.
Aye.
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 Aye, uh, item number six, six passes unanimously nine zero. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Good luck on your project. Uh, it is eight seventeen, we're gonna move on to items number seven, eight, and nine. Uh, but we'll do seven separately, kinda, uh, put the make sure the cart is not before the horse. Um, and discuss the ordinance text amendment. Uh, item number seven, development services requests approval of an ordinance text amendment to adopt an agrotourism overlay zone. Uh, citywide application. Uh, Mr. Ardmore's presenting, uh, just as a side note, this is a new, this is a new zone that hasn't previously existed in Provo. Go ahead, Ms. Ardmore.
That's right. Uh, so yeah, so, uh, a little bit of background on this, you recall, uh, applicants came in with a proposed text, text amendment to that agricultural zone, uh, to allow certain uses. Um, as discussion kinda grew and developed with planning commission and city council, there seemed to be support for the idea of allowing different uses in these zones. Um, but maybe a, a different way of doing it, so the path forward was this overlay zone, uh, in front of you is the, the two pages of the overlay zone. There'll be a little bit different text on the screen than there is in your staff packet. Uh, Legal looked at it and changed some wording. Uh, just clean up the wording a little bit, but it's essentially the same, uh, regulations and ideas. Nothing really substantial changed, but, uh, the background on this was to, uh, allow agricultural zone properties, farms, ranches in Provo City. Uh, another way of economic, uh, pursuit. Uh, where farming's getting harder, uh, but at the same time Provo values agricultural land. Uh, there was a, there's a, a hope that this could help preserve some of the agricultural land that we have in the city. Um, so you'll see there through, through the zone code, there's additional permitted uses, commercial tours, educational classes, museums, and event halls uh, that wouldn't otherwise be permitted in an ag zone. Um, these property owners that own property in Ag Zone would still have to come and ask for a zone change to put the overlay onto their property, they'd have to have with that a concept plan detailing how that's gonna meet uh, the underlying zone and, and these standards. Uh, a lot of the discussion, um, or a lot of the standards and requirements in the zone came from the discussion with the city council. Um, just so, so you're aware of kind of that background. Um, you did receive, uh, some public input, uh, in, in opposition of some of our concern with some of this language. Um, comparing it to, to other event halls specifically that we have in the city. Um, I, and I I, I see that there are differences, but those are there for a reason. Uh, most of those event halls in the city are downtown. Uh, they're, they're in downtown neighborhoods, uh, they're not in an agricultural zone with animal rights, so because of those things that these event halls, these public spaces would be coming to properties with animal rights and, and everything that comes with that, uh, we thought it was important to, to, um, require certain conditions with with those types of uses. I think that's all I have on this, um, do you have any questions?
Go ahead, uh, any, any commissioners, go ahead, um.
Um, so, I just would like some clarity on this, um, fourteen oh eight A one hundred event hall requirements. Uh, it says when an event is held past nine P, nine PM, they need security. Um, does that mean they need security past nine PM, or if the event goes through to the after hours of nine PM, they need to have security the whole time? Does that only be an hour or two hours? And is that what you meant?
It's a good question.
Cause that's not.
I guess it could be interpreted either way, right? I think the idea was that if, if you're holding an event that's gonna run from, you know, six PM till eleven PM.
Ten or eleven.
Um, that you'd have to have one private security person for every seventy-five guests.
Okay. So the security would have to be there even if it starts earlier in the evening, and this is, the reasoning was the emergency services and
Right, maintaining, maintaining that atmosphere, again, you're in agricultural zone, which you're typically in a character of, uh, surrounding residential neighborhood, uh, and just wanna kind of protect that.
Can I also get some clarity on the one above that, the permitted uses, uh, seize operation between the following hours, so ten PM on Sunday to eight AM on Monday, et cetera, and then eleven PM on Friday to eight AM on Saturday, and eleven PM on Saturday to eight AM on Sunday, is that right?
That's right, yeah, so those, yep, you got it.
So is it the day is mentioned with the starting time?
Right.
Okay.
Yep, a little later on the weekends.
I have a question on the language in here. Where, let's see here, sorry. Where it talks about I had it here. Well, I guess I'm just kinda confused how it went from a zone issue to an overlay zone with more contingencies added. Um, I, I guess I don't agree with that additional, the additional regulations and standards to address any of the concerns raised about allowing event halls on agricultural properties. I mean, we had concerns here when we met, and then it went to the city council, and I listened to the meeting August first, and then I also listened to it again today. And none of those concerns were brought up, they were very supportive. They they wanted it to go to, um, an overlay zone. And they felt very comfortable with that option, but some of them also said, we don't want to impose extra conditions on you. That was, uh, that would increase or jeopardize the viability of your business down the road. Um, they wanted to get this part right. And they didn't want to punish you with extra conditions that you shouldn't have to hold to, so I guess when I read that.
So which ones are you speaking to?
Um.
Cause most of those conditions came out of the proposed conditions when we were going that out.
In the council meeting or when, when we met?
The, the text amendment, uh, remember, there's a, it was gonna be a conditional use permit, and there's proposed conditions with that language. That's where most of these standards.
Is that from when we met, or?
Yes, that was in front of you.
So that's, that's part of my concern too, is because I felt, and this is just me being candid here. I felt, you know, uncomfortable at that time when we met, because, um, we were tasked with making contingencies, which were out of our scope, which I was kind of uncomfortable with, um, we were talking about security, how many people with, how many security people we'd need with like how many, you know, patrons or children or, you know? And then also, we were kind of having to guess, if you can remember, we were trying to guess on um, how many acres should be allowed to be able to have a venue on the property. And I just felt like at that point, we weren't really experienced to make those kind of contingencies, which is why it was rejected three to four. So when I watched the city council meeting, that's why I was a little bit concerned or confused, because those issues weren't even brought up, really.
So, so Steph took, took a look at this as the council directed them to. And we thought of all the different concerns and, and regulations that would need to be a part of it for us to feel comfortable bringing it forward. Uh, this is what we ended up on, and I think if you take some of those things away, the minimum size of five acres, uh, some of the event hall requirements, I don't think staff would want to bring this forward.
So ultimately, this is a decision of the city council, right? You're recommending board to them, and please make whatever recommendation you're comfortable with.
Okay.
Staff is also recommending board to them. This is what we're comfortable with. We're the ones who are gonna have to administer this for years into the future, after this is adopted, whatever is adopted. So what we felt important, what was important is to have conditions of approval that are measurable, that are known upfront by being in the ordinance and that are enforceable. Because we're trying to head off problems that we can anticipate, we may have a year, two or three years from now. So this is what the staff is comfortable with, but if you wanna put towards something different, feel free to do that.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't feel comfortable looking, you know, at all the other venues and how they're not held to some of the same requirements, and
Again, that's a, a totally different context, I think. You're, you're in a downtown environment, uh, where these kind of things are expected.
The difference is these have animal rights, we're trying to take public health, safety, and welfare into account of having animal rights and manure piles with a special event that will be serving food. All of these things are trying to take those two land uses that could be adopted of each other and make them work together.
Hmm, okay, thank you.
Go, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I feel that the I feel that this, you've done a great job of coming up with this overlay, and I, I think it's a thing that will help. And, but I also feel that these requirements are needed. And I'm in favor of them. I think they should be held on this overlay, all these requirements.
Yeah, I, I'm just gonna move down the line, um, cause I think there is a fair amount of comment, um. Commissioner Newton gave us, uh, Commissioner Rolene, did do you have anything else?
Well, I'm fine with the overlay, I just feel like the contingencies were just kind of like, we keep moving, someone mentioned moving the goalpost. I feel like we just keep adding to it, it's been going on now for about six months, and I just feel like we're just keep adding more contingencies, and I, I'm fine with the overlay, and that was our concern. Um, Dr. Kendall brought that up at the last meeting when this was addressed, and we've kind of talked about and discussed it, but I don't know, I asked for help on the contingencies at that time, and it was I think it was brought up, and she said, well, just reference what they had mentioned in their request, you know, we, we, we sat and talked about it. And, and now they're coming up with more contingencies, and so it just concerned me. That's all.
I do want to acknowledge, I, I, I agree, you're right, there, I mean, there's there's three different bodies that are are stakeholders of this, I, in addition to the applicant, there's the planning commission that has our interests and, and the city's interests, there's uh, the city council that have come up with new stuff, and then there's planning staff, so I, this this is a, quite a juggling act we're doing, uh.
And if you watch the city council, um, these conditions weren't brought up. I watched it twice, so I'm just letting you know.
Can I interject something real quick? Completely off topic, but my son's trying to get in, and he says the door is locked, can someone let him in? Okay, thanks.
That was out of line.
Sorry.
Go ahead, uh, Commissioner Jensen.
Yes, I had some questions about the intent, just to make sure that we understand it, or that the language does need to be refined. Um, in the parking and access section on page five of the staff report, it says all parking spaces shall be designed in accordance with sections fourteen point three, seven point one oh. Um, so that means no dirt or gravel, so we're in an agricultural area, and we're saying all the access roads had to be paved, correct?
Yeah, uh, yeah.
I guess that's just parking spaces, so we're not just pulling into a field and putting up some orange cones, this is an official parking.
Checking out mud and things like that.
Okay. Um, in the design standard section, number two, it says the design and architecture should be consistent with the agricultural setting, um, how is that determined or verified? At what stage of the process of application is, is that standard determined and verified?
So yeah, so that concept plan that would come with this rezon request, uh, in the future would go in front of the DRC, and there's definitely some
Several screens.
Some discretion and subjectivity to that, but.
Okay, so a divi- design review committee and city staff would have their opinions weighed in on what that looks like in each situation?
Right, I, I imagine we would go and take photos of the, the property that's requesting the zone, um, and have those in addition to the renderings provided.
Like a surrounding area?
Yeah.
Okay, um, is, are these hours of operation being suggested in the next section, are they the same as curfew and quiet hours in neighborhoods? Like the police mandated quiet hours?
Um, I, I believe so, they're consistent with, uh, dance hall, uh, in the, in the business license chapter.
Okay. It just seemed like it made good sense to me to have those line up. Um, I also wondered what the reason was, was it a health and safety reason for the fifty foot um, distance requirement away from animals and
Yes.
Is that, is that somewhere in a health code, or is that something that someone determined would be safe? Like, I'm just wondering where we get that from, so we can have some teeth in it.
You know, I didn't, I didn't pull that from a health code, I think we kind of just took some measurements on the map and
Okay. That might be helpful.
Yeah.
Just to have, um, some sort of, making it measurable, making it this is what is a good standard of health and safety. I'm just a suggestion. Um, and then I just wanted to point out, I guess maybe this is more for later, but you can interject if I'm wrong. We've talked recently about some other event halls in downtown or in commercial zones in the city that were having, um, problems with, with this similar style event that had, that were required to have, um, security guards and, and other things implemented in order to continue having their business, so even though it might not be in the code, it's not an unusual requirement, so for whatever that's worth.
Yeah, just to note, the, the reason I think we brought that up is in the months, uh, preceding the applicant's application, the, um, a dance hall was having their business license revoked, their, their use, their conditional use revoked, um, zoning because of, uh, security issues, safety issues, anyways. Commissioner, what?
Uh, yeah, I just had a couple of quick questions I was curious about, when we did, uh, had, had our last meeting, and we were looking at this, uh, under the conditional use requirements. There was a security requirement, correct, and it, was it one per fifty, or one, or did this, did it say the same?
It, it wasn't, uh, it wasn't numerical at that point.
It wasn't.
That came in through the discussions with county management and council.
Okay, I was trying to remember that, okay, and then, um, just from like a point of process, uh, should we hold till the discussion for any thoughts or feedback?
Yeah, yeah, this is, uh, focusing on questions to staff.
I have a question.
We have.
So in, earlier on, and I don't remember this myself, but it does say, I mean, later on, on page seven, it says, uh, our suggestion was requires security for events that have live music works in past ten PM. Um, and, but this was, this is when an event is held past nine PM, which is one hour before the last allowable, you know, operations, I'm wondering why, um, it was moved to nine PM? And if you have any information that this was based on about like, what days of the week are more, if there are any that are more problematic, or what, what, you know, are there statistics on time, time of date that that cuts off, is that where you came up with this, I just wanna know the background?
Again, background on that, uh, these ag zones are surrounded typically by residential neighborhoods, uh, with children going to sleep, school days, things like that. Uh, Fridays, Saturdays, not as a big of a deal, cause there's no school next day, so we extend it a little later. And again, those are consistent with, uh, other requirements in business licensing.
I, sorry, I don't think I explained, uh, maybe, cause I feel like that's not the answer I was looking for, um, so the events can be held till ten PM on weekdays. And eleven PM on Friday and Saturday. We had said the security, we suggested the security should be for events past ten PM. And so that nine to ten hour having the security required, or that would cause the security, trigger the security to be required, is because or that would cause the security, trigger the security to be required is because of school hours, even though the music and everything else, the operations is still extended till ten P M.
Right, right. We think it would be better maintained and policed if there's actually somebody.
Yeah, go ahead.
First of all, I think staff's done a really great job of trying to mesh this, the concerns that we had before with these different use cases. We actually had talked about, at least in the proposed language, a minimum of two security personnel to be onsite to manage entrance of vehicles and parking during any event. I remember a lot of discussion about that. Well, what if we bring kids out here for, uh, high school, an elementary school field trip or something? Do we have to have security personnel there? And so I think staff's done a great job of trying to identify, you know, what the real needs are and, and trying to propose those for the right kinds of events. So I think that's great. The one thing I didn't see that, that was proposed, well, there's several things, but one that I thought was interesting was the lighting. There was a, a, a can, a proposed condition in the first round that lighting shouldn't disperse beyond the subject lot. And we don't see that in the, in the new overlay zone. I'm just curious if that's.
That's, that's already addressed in, uh, fifteen twenty one, chapter fifteen twenty one.
Okay.
Regulated already, so we didn't feel like we needed to repeat that.
That's it.
Any other questions for staff?
Just one real quick that just came to my mind, you know, in these agricultural zones for a long time, we've had things like corn mazes and other kind of fall events, harvest events. Do you imagine in the future that falling under this or because it's not an event hall at one?
No, those are already permitted by RIDE. So those can continue even without this.
Great.
I, yeah, I, I have you here, so I'm, I'll just ask you, uh, the, just in reviewing the applicant's, uh, letter, when they brought up a list of venues that had options for events going until one A M. We probably already discussed this, but I just need a little more succinct statement, but are, are, are those, are those venues when they say they, they go to midnight? And, and, and one A M, uh, are, are those places in violation of, I know there are different zones, they're in commercial zones, but are they in violation of there's some enforcement?
Let me, let me look through chapter six when I sit down and, and answer that.
Okay, yeah, it will recall you back up. Yeah. Commissioner Kendall?
Um, my understanding from what I've heard from the city is that this is different than those venues because it's surrounded by residential.
Right.
And so a good comparison would be Wadley Farms. And Wadley Farms, you have to be out by ten P M. Period. Wadley Farms is in, um, Linden, surrounded by residential.
So I don't see any more questions for Mr. Ardmore. Let's go ahead and invite the applicant up.
Oh, we are the applicant.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. So this is on the ordinance text amendment. Is there any district representatives present? Would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, uh, the applicant. I'm, I'm doing this all out of order. The applicant, um, would you please come up?
No, there's cities.
Oh, gosh. It's getting late. I'm I'm gonna open this up to public comment. Uh, the public hearing portion, it's been a long night, forgive me.
Before you start my two minutes, who's paying the babysitting? Are we babysitting you or are you babysitting?
Uh, yeah, go ahead. Uh, if, if you could just speak to some of the issues that were brought up by the different commissioners and, and we, we've read your, I've read your letter. I, I trust that my fellow commissioners have. If you're not able to get everything you can in, in two minutes, we'll, I think we'll ask you questions that might give you more time.
Thank you. Um, I guess I would just say this, that, oh, my name is Barry Finch. I live in Provo down West End. I guess I would just say this, that you guys are tasked to try to make good decisions with people with various issues coming before you. But I think this is a case study for not, how it should not work. In that uh, somebody mentioned the goalpost keeps getting moved. We were told, this is seven months that we've been doing this. We've been told that the, the only way to do this was with a zone amendment. And in order to do that, we felt like we had to negotiate. And so we negotiated. I've never personally gone to a wedding that's had security. I never have. Doubt I ever will. But we negotiated that. We felt like that's something we could do. And as a business owner, I would say that it makes sense many times to have security. But that's a business decision. That's a business decision. If I'm having fights and police coming all the time, my neighborhood isn't going to put up with it. My customers are going to review me on internet and the market's going to work that out. We've heard that all night long. The market's going to work that out. If my place stinks, the market's going to work that out. If my place is trashy, it's going to work its way out. And so I would just say that please don't move the goalposts. We, we no longer are asking for an amendment to the zone that will have this citywide application, which was what you guys said was the concern. Liked the idea, didn't like the methodology. That's the same thing that the city council said. Liked seven to zero in favor of the project, but didn't like the com, uh, the way we were doing it. Well, the way we were doing it is the way the staff suggested. So now we're doing this, uh, a different way. So to put us, I think, in an unfair advantage with our competitors, if someone else can stay open till midnight, we.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. Is, is there another member from the public? Please. Thank you.
Judy Finch, Provo. I have concerns about the conditional uses in this overlay zone. In Provo City General Plan for the West Side, it says to encourage agritourism. It also says to remove obstacles to the success of agritourism. The city council has agreed and required, and requested staff to come up with agritourism overlay zone to help farmers to have additional avenues for to create income. The city council also has mandated that the zone overlay would be less restrictive than a zone amendment because the city has more control over a zone overlay. I feel the following restrictions written in this overlay put agritourism at a disadvantage compared to other businesses. Uh, control of hours of operation in a business. Uh, set their own hours like grocery stores, theaters, clubs, wedding venues. Research I did show that wedding venues in Provo don't have a city mandated hour of operation. Um, security, I did, the research I did show that wedding venues in Provo do not have a city mandated security. Some chose to have security if alcohol is served, but no other reason. Distant, uh, requirements, this overlay is for existing farms. If they choose to build the barn venue on their, on their farm, it could very easily border existing buildings that may have animals. Having a fifty feet distant requirement could cause obstacles to the success of the business. It could force farmable land being used for the venue instead of a farmyard that is already dedicated to buildings. I would ask the staff to remove these conditional uses in this agritourism zone overlay. Wadley Farms has, only has security when alcohol is served by their choice. They have live music and they go to ten without security. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy Finch. Anyone else from the public that would like to comment? Please come forward.
My name's Scott Christofferson. I live in Provo, close to the Finch Farm. Mainly just planned to come tonight to see what was going on with this. And I wasn't planning on speaking, but as I've watched how the events have went through tonight, I felt like I should say something like these event buildings. What type of events are going to be held here? Are they going to be concerts? Is this going to be a USANA type thing? Is there going to be? Is it for more like, you talked about animal rights? I, is there going to be horse shows or? Maybe somebody can just explain a little to me of what the usage of this is going to be for.
Yeah, uh,
Somebody?
Let me, let me go ahead. I'm gonna invite, uh, staff, uh, Mr. Ardmore. Yeah, what, did you, are there any other questions you have that you'd like?
Well, yes, there is. The other items, maybe I'll discuss that when we get to item nine.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, my main concern with, with item A is it says approval for a four lot subdivision. Subdivision of what? Is it going to be? Okay. All right, well, I'll sit down for a minute and you guys can continue.
Uh, I'm, I'm gonna note just on the, wha, what's up on the screen, uh, permitted uses would be commercial tours, agricultural tours, educational classes, museums and event halls. What I understood the event halls to be contemplated were weddings, quinceañera type things, family parties, maybe reunions, dances, concerts. And they're, they're limited based on their building size uh, and, and code and then uh, parking. And that's what they're, they're limited to, but, um, I'll have Mr. Ardmore, uh, address that if you have anything else to add.
That's exactly right. Yeah, event hall, um, anything you, you can imagine going into them. That could follow these conditions, right? Um, but like you say, uh, building code, fire, egress code and parking availability would determine some of that as well. So yes, uh, a variety of things could be thought of in an event hall. Getting back to your question on the hours, um, other businesses in the city downtown, for example, uh, Sunday through Friday, they have to cease at one A M. Saturday, they have to cease at one thirty A M.
So that's a, that's a downtown zone that allows one P M, not, not necessarily other commercial zones.
Right. I think that's it.
That, that, that answers my question as far as that that gap or discrepancies. Anyone else here from the public? I, I don't see any other, unless you're stunned. Does anyone else want to recall staff or recall anyone else for additional questions? Commissioner Kendall?
I have a question for staff about the fifty foot distance that was discussed. What are your feelings?
Oh, I will go ahead and close public comment. We're, we're discussing amongst ourselves, but we're also reserved the right to recall uh, individuals as needed. Go ahead to Commissioner Kendall.
So I would just like to hear your feelings about the fifty foot distance, the importance of that, pros and cons, how firm do you feel about that and why?
Um, the number of fifty, I, I think that could take some more research and, and that number could change. I think there is a really important idea there in separating feed, waste, animals from an event hall. Uh, if you could think of all the different events that would be had in an event hall with food, drink. I think you'd want to separate those uses. Um, fifty might not be the right number. And I think staff could go back and look at, uh, some research on that between now and the city council.
Go ahead, Mr. Kendall.
So with that, I mean, is it enough perhaps just to say it's not the same building? Right? If there's a wall partitioning that, is that enough to create that separation? Something to look at.
Right, I will look at that.
With that, along with that, we've seen several concerns come up with the security with other event halls not being required to have security, et cetera. Can you comment on that? And if they aren't required, why require it here when we don't at other places?
I think that, um, has been, uh, a mistake in, in specifically dance halls in the city. Um, we've seen problems come when there's no security on site. Um, not only in the venue, but in the parking lot of the venue. So I think moving forward, we want to correct that mistake.
Or are there any pending or anticipated ordinance text amendments with, uh, as they apply to dance halls for a security requirement for other zones?
We haven't, we haven't looked at that because they're conditional use permits. If there are issues, those can be revoked. When it's something like this and granted through the zone itself, we want to make sure that's, that's in there because once you give the zone, it's, it's pretty difficult to take it back.
Um, yeah, I, I wanted to say thank you for, to staff for, um, putting the work into this. I think it's been a long running discussion and I, what I see here is definitely a lot of the inputs that were given by the planning commission incorporated that. So that was, that's, you know, really appreciate that. Good, good work. Um, uh, I do have just like a couple thoughts on the margins around some of these things, uh, that I would like to share. So first one is around the requirements for security. I think you're right. I mean, we had the issue with El Fuego Fridays. I think we've learned from experience that when there's alcohol, uh, in a club-like environment, that you do need security on staff. And I think that, you know, the one per seventy five adults incorporates some of the, you know, some of the, uh, feedback from the last meeting and it's less strict than I think what we were talking about, what we were talking about too. So I think that's good, but, uh, the, the, kind of the couple like just quibbles I'd have is like live music. If someone is playing their guitar in the room, I don't, I, I, I wonder if you like, say like amplified live music or a band. I just, I think what we're trying to get at there is like, there is a, there is a loud band-like music happening that kind of creates that raucous environment, not like something like a quinceañera playing a little Spanish guitar. I don't know. I just feel like there's, that's like kind of a little overly broad. That's my opinion on that one. And then the other one, or a piano exactly, like if it's a wedding, someone could be playing a piano and that's technically live music and I don't think that really should require security personally.
That's good, no.
The other just small quibble I'd have is like, um, the nine P M feels like maybe ten, but I, I get it. So that's, that's one that maybe feels a little strict where we could maybe relax just a little bit, but overall I understand the need for security. Wanted to give positive feedback on, I think previously we were talking about ten, we moved it to five. I feel like that was a reasonable accommodation to make this more viable. So I appreciate that. Um, under, uh, fourteen zero eight A seventy on building standards, the number two feels great. Really love that. Um, that was like a, a good addition. Number one, I kind of again, wonder if it's just a little too broad because it's like I mean, I know what we're getting at, but it's like, can can I not put the, you know, metal trusses inside where they're not visible? Like I, I just feel like it feels like you can't use metal at all, feels like.
I think that I could rewrite that to say, um, non-agricultural metal.
Yeah, exactly. Something like that. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly. Yes. Um, I, I think that would help. And then I'm just looking through my notes. Um, uh, I have a small note where I, I do feel like if it's the proper grade, gravel should be a permitted parking. I think that's in my experience, going to these kind of agro business events, it's very common. There's a business down in Arizona I frequented a lot growing up called, uh, Schneff Farms and they had large, uh, gravel-based parking lots that were well-maintained. It just, you can't have overly grade, so it gets muddy. So I, I would, would like to see potentially that permission for this zone. I think it's, it goes along with the look and feel of what we're trying to accomplish. Those are my primary points of feedback.
Mr. Ardmore, you could probably sit down. I think we're kind of discussing this, uh, sorry, thanks. I'll reserve my thoughts. I, I'd love to hear more from anyone. Commissioner DeSoto?
Yeah, I, I agree about the live music. I think that maybe being specific to concerts where the point of it is to be there and it's going to be loud, maybe that would be the solution to that where maybe a wedding and having a little jazz band is could be quiet and naturally orderly because it's a family oriented event. But once you get to maybe concerts and it's adults and there's alcohol, definitely, um, has a different situation. Um, so I would just suggest that. And I still also. situation. Um, so I would just suggest that. And I still also feel the, the change from 10:00 PM, security required past 9:00 PM. I mean, I feel like it's only one hour difference and it's to closing time. I feel like on a weeknight, maybe it's more important. I don't know. I just wonder about that.
No, there's a huge difference between a string quartet and a, and a concert.
Yeah, I have some comments.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
So first of all, I want to say that as someone who worked on the West Side Plan years ago, we had all these debates because the, the city council had said, hey, we want to preserve agriculture in the city. We kept looking at it and we kept saying, how in the world are we going to do that? Right? And it's great to see kind of a plan coming together that's going to allow, um, some of that agriculture out there to be preserved, um, and used in a way that is compatible with a growing urban city in the area. Right? So I like that. Um, a couple of comments, some of these have been commented already. Um, as far as the security, I mean, yeah, there's a difference between a, you know, string quartet and a loud band. Um, but at the same time too, I think maybe security should be there if it's a DJ playing recorded music, right? Um, if it's a concert, dance, ruckus, kind of loud type thing. And so I think there should be some work to reconfigure that to account for what we're really trying to accomplish there. I personally would just remove the time requirement on the security because I think alcohol and type of activity is way more important than what time of day it is when it's there. Um, I'd love to see more work on the 50 foot, um, requirement just to see what is the right one. I do understand the need for health and safety for that, but what is that number? I think it needs to be adjusted, backed number, not just one we picked. Um, and then finally, um, I would love to see a little more review and thought into the time so that we are not creating a disadvantage with other types of event halls in the city, but at the same time we are balancing what the, you know, neighborhood needs are, et cetera. Um, I feel like maybe 10 during the week probably is the right time. Um, maybe 11 Friday, Saturday, but maybe midnight might be a more appropriate time, um, on the weekends, um, just to try to help make sure that these businesses can be viable and successful as well. So overall, I really like the idea of how we're putting this together.
For whatever it's worth, I disagree with making it go later. I think we need to remember if this were around the corner from my house, I would be very cranky if, I like, I can hear parties downtown after 11 o'clock at my house and that makes me cranky. If it was any closer, I would be, I'd feel like it wasn't right for the neighborhood. So we have to remember this is an exception. This is a special allowance. And so there's going to be special rules that someone at, at a commercial location or downtown location doesn't have.
Yeah, there's absolute, uh, this, this is distinguishable from the, the other dance halls that were mentioned and event halls, uh, because it's a, it's in a different zone. It's in a different zone. It's in a different part of the city. Uh, the surrounding uses are completely different. Um.
Well, if I can push back just a little bit.
Yeah, go ahead.
Let's not pretend nobody lives downtown, right? Yeah, the zone is different, but there's still our residents who care about noise, et cetera, et cetera. And we haven't felt the need to do it there. And yet we feel a need to do it here. And so, I don't know. I mean, maybe the answer is we need to do a better job downtown at dictating these kinds of things, but there are people that live there too.
I think the difference is when you move downtown, you know that you're moving to a place that allows those uses. When you move into the rural area on the west side or the, the sparsely populated residential areas, you expect a different level of peace and quiet. And that's already written in the code when you, when you invest. So.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with, with making noise restrictions, but I'm also a fireworks hater, so you can hold that against me.
And I, and I don't have a problem with the noise downtown. People, if they don't know it, they, they should that there's concerts downtown. There's, University Avenue was, has one of the highest traffic counts in, in the city, uh.
People coming out of the temple, they are loud.
They're loud. They're very loud.
Trains are loud. Like it's just, it's a louder environment. So I, I think we need to remember that. That's why there's an overlay zone so we can bring in a different set of standards because it's a different land use.
Cause, cause a lot of the, a lot of the remaining agriculture, at least. There, there's pockets of remaining agriculture, you know, scattered throughout the city that are in, you know, R1 type zoning, single family. It's, it's different.
I know, and, uh, I'm just riffing here. I know this might be an annoying comment, but I wonder if like, I kind of wonder if the event halls is actually like a little bit too broad of a category for what we're trying to do here because of the concert permitted use. Like I think if you think about the original applicant, um, it's more like family gatherings, weddings, not necessarily concerts. I think concerts is what really makes this like, I totally get it. Like if you're having a concert in an agricultural area and it's going to, uh, 11:00 PM, I think even that's going to be kind of annoying honestly for a lot of residents. But, so I, I wonder if there's like a repurposing of like, of the dance hall. Cause I, I know we're doing it because we can pull in all that like code for the da, event halls, but it's just a thought.
So is there a separate land use code for wedding reception halls versus dance halls or event venues?
You could recommend that we say event halls accept concerts, something like that in the language.
I agree. Something like that. Or if, if, yeah, if we don't want them concerts at all, some concerts could be quiet, but, um, for me, it was just that all live music triggers security when I feel like it's concert, like really that's the, that is the event is music is the problem more than just that there might be incidental live music to the main event being a wedding or a family reunion.
I, I want to try and move to a little bit of consensus to where we get a motion. Um, I expect that there will be some additional alterations or conditions. And what I'm sensing is that, uh, uh, striking on 14, 08A100 event hall requirements that, um, maybe striking the live music event in, in, in consideration of the, the types of music that might be performed there. And then, uh, changing the time to, from 9:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Or getting rid of it. Cause 10:00 PM is closing most of the time and it's one hour left. So that's, I just don't know if time matters at that one point.
Just striking no security. Secure, time doesn't trigger security. It's alcohol that triggers.
Yeah, just leaving alcohol.
And concerts, which you could just get rid of entirely. Yeah, exactly.
Right? I'm seeing the applicant nod that that's probably acceptable. So that sure makes it cleaner, I would imagine for the city going forward to be able to separate that out also in these zones. Can I make some comments?
Yes, please.
And I'll tell you my thoughts. So I really appreciate that the city was willing to do this because I think this gets to the exact thing we're trying to do, help preserve agricultural land. And yet the city has the opportunity to, um, approve each one. Everybody has to come and ask for the overlay and then also, uh, show a concept plan. So that gives protection to the city. Um, I don't think we need to worry about it being successful. Wadley Farms proves that kicking everybody out by 10:00 PM works just fine for weddings. I mean, you know, I, I know there are a few groups where wedding parties go longer, but most people are out of there. It's, it's fine. It's done and they'll be quite successful. So if they need to go later, they'll pick a different venue, but, um, you can hardly get into Wadley Farms. They're so busy. So, so I think that, you know, to say this is different because it is, um, surrounded by residential neighborhoods is very valid and should be treated differently because of that. Um, I would really love to see some concrete, um, idea about the 50 foot distance so we can come up with something that's acceptable and, uh, meets the, uh, health and safety and welfare requirements, but isn't burdensome to the applicant. Um, I, so I think everything else really is good. I, I also agree with the change of the building material to metal not permitted on the facade. And, um, I also agree with the gravel concept. Again, Wadley Farms has gravel. And if it's the right consistency, you don't end up with mud. And, um, I just think that's helpful because then animals and whatever else can also be moved through those areas as necessary and.
And frankly, it preserves the agricultural feel much better than a massive paved parking lot.
I agree with that. Um, let's see. Okay. So I, I would say as far as security, only if alcohol is served, um, I don't even have a problem with, only if the applicant feels that that is necessary. But if the city wants to, I understand the city's concern that you can't revoke the use in this case. And so it would be better to build in that protection. So I agree with that. Okay. Those were my thoughts.
I hope someone's taking notes as far as conditions and making.
Well, what I just heard, what I just heard Commissioner Kendall say was that basically, um, 14.08A.100 could not have A, B, and C. It could just have, event halls shall provide one privately contracted and licensed onsite security per 75 adult patrons when alcohol is served. That's what I heard because we're saying, we're going to say somewhere else that live music concerts are not actually going to be allowed at an event hall in an agricultural zone. And we don't think the time matters. That was what I heard Ms. Ms. Kendall say.
We don't think the time matters for security, but we still, I would still adhere to the time.
Right. Still the deadline, but as far as security goes, I think we could get rid of items A and B and not have the, a bulleted list there and just say, we want you to have security one per 75 participants if alcohol is served.
I want to go back to Commissioner Hill's comment though, but what about, what about a dance and a DJ and you've got, you know, some kind of party going on or whatever without alcohol and it's going right up to midnight and you've got 300 people there? Do they need to have security there? Right? I mean, I, I think there's still are conditions and I also want to return to the, the comment about we're making, um, this, this, uh, agritourism overlay zone applicable for lots of different uses. And I know we've got one applicant who's a great example of this and has brought it forward, but this could also go other locations. So we just need to be careful that we don't try to make it specific to what we think this is going to be and it really is the overlay zone.
That's, well, that's why I liked her suggestion of not having a concert because I feel like that's not something you want in any adjacent to a residential area and neighborhood.
Yeah, that's what people will hate about this is, is concert, concerts and DJs late playing loud, loud music. Like if, I think if you get rid of that, this will be much more palatable for everyone.
And it's not midnight anyway. It's 11:00 PM.
How do you define though a concert?
Versus a dance with a DJ.
Quartet at a wedding. I mean, what's the difference?
Yeah, like, like every wedding, lots of weddings have DJs, uh, if there's a dance at the wedding. But it's not a dance. Like it's not a, a dance where they're charging admission to people from the public.
Well, we've also got very popular venues that are like a country swing dance lesson and they've got a DJ and they've got music and they've got wild and crazy people swinging themselves around.
I'm just a little bit nervous about the, um, you don't need security unless alcohol is served because some venues won't be able to qualify for liquor license because of where they're located next to a school or next to a church. And with certain types of venues or uses, people may be bringing in their own alcohol. So I would be really nervous about that general category of if there's no alcohol being served.
And that's why maybe those other limitations were placed in there because I remember that was part of the other one we dealt with, with the condition, conditional use permit. They weren't serving alcohol, but people were going out in the parking lot, getting alcohol and causing a problem in the, on the property, even though it wasn't inside the venue.
Right.
But couldn't you, could you say if alcohol is being consumed on the premise and then make the owner responsible for that? Cause they'd lose their license if, uh, if the police find alcohol there and there isn't security.
Uh, well, again, how would we know that that's going on if there's not security there? Or are we going to rely on their security to let us know that alcohol is being consumed?
I guess my argument would be that if there's an incident in which alcohol is involved, then the business owner would be liable for that because they did not have per security on staff. Like if there's an incident on the property and the police show up and there's alcohol involved and there is not security, it's on the business owner to ensure that that's happening or they lose their business license.
Okay.
Assuming that reporting is taking place, is that where your chin rubbing is coming from?
Yes.
That communication is hard to come by?
And the burden of having to send the police out. It's, I mean, a lot of this is because of a situation you're aware of where we had in order to matter, police calls to that venue. Um, as far as the, this music and a quartet versus a rock band, let us give some thought to that. Cause I agree, we should not treat both of those the same. Yeah.
Is it possible to put like a decibel measurement in the?
That's one way we could do it. Yes. I mean, that's something that is definitely measurable. So that's one thing we could try to do. Yeah. And there is actually a standard in the nuisance ordinance about what that decibel level is.
I wonder if there's also a possibility of saying if the music is not the main event, it's just a small part of the event, like it's a part of the event.
Ancillary to the event.
Exactly. But it's like, the event would still go on whether the band showed up or not, right?
Yeah.
Somebody could put on their iPhone and put on some music like, you know, but that the, that's the concert idea or, um.
But what, what about a dance with a live folk band playing swing music? Like that's a legitimate, where does that fall on the spectrum?
I would think that would be the main function.
It would be the main function. Yeah. And, but do we want to discourage that in an agricultural zone? That seems like a perfect use for some of these.
I don't think you'd want to discourage it. Uh, you could do both. You could have a decibel level and you could say it should be just, you know, not the main purpose.
Right.
Either or, right?
One other thing I think we should consider about the security also is this is going to be, these, these locations are going to be more remote and so access to emergency services is likely to be more difficult to come by.
So more important to have the security.
Yeah. I mean, the event that we're talking about, it was right downtown and they had multiple police calls and the police were close and they were monitoring it because they were, this was happening frequently. Had this out in a, in a more resident, or rural area, this can be a little bit more difficult.
But at the same time, I don't want to overindex on that thing because that event is specifically a club. It's a club that happens once a week on Friday nights. I don't think that is what we are intending like to permit or allow to happen in this use. So I'd rather design this such that that use is not permitted at all than say, oh, it's going to happen anyway. So we might as well have security there. That's kind of where I would come from in this.
I, I agree with that. And I think that's what the city's saying too, that once we grant something, we can't take this one away. Conditional use permits you can take away, but this one, it's going to be harder if somebody's doing something. So it's better to get it straight from the beginning because it's going to be harder to take away the use.
Well, do event halls include dance clubs or is there a distinction where opening a dance club that's doing dances every week would violate that?
There's a specific distinction.
So two different land use codes? So you can say event hall and not have it be a dance hall?
Dance halls, that's completely separate.
What about, um, like velour? Where does that fall?
Velour?
The music place?
Yeah, I'd have to look up to see what then.
Because that could also be very loud if you had people migrating to the wilderness to have their concerts.
My guess is it's probably an event hall, if I had to guess.
Right. And I'm saying that I think from what we just said, that that's not what we want to see.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
So double check that.
Okay.
Well, you could, you could solve it with a decibel, right? So, I mean, you could have, you could have it as long as it wasn't too loud. Would that be okay? If there's no alcohol consumption and it's not too loud, would that be an acceptable thing if there was, you know, something going on of that nature? So that would be your, your western swing dance or, you know? But I guess western swing dance, it would, that's more of a dance hall use. So that would not be permitted anyway, right?
Except for maybe on occasion.
Uh, we're, I, we're seeing a lot, I mean.
Uh, there's a lot of crossover. That's why I was talking.
Bringing in a lot of, a lot of cross uses where you have the intersection of music and dancing and, and then the actual event, the, uh.
Wild and crazy people hooting and hollering.
I think you're starting to see, uh, the difficulty that staff has had with this.
Yeah.
Um, you could really get into the weeds on all the ifs and buts. Um, and it's, it's an experiment, right? This is new to the Provo City. So we want to get it right. Uh, we might have to come back and fix it as it happens. Um, but as close as right as we can get on this first try is, is going to be good. So any suggestions you have for us to take to the city council, we, we would love to hear them in your motion. Um, but yeah.
I mean, I'm really intrigued by this decibel idea because I feel like that's what the neighbors are concerned about too, is loud noise, right?
But I'm back to undoing what I. But I'm back to undoing what I restated what I thought Commissioner Kendall was saying and saying. Let's leave all of A, B, and C in there. Cause I'd rather be more restrictive and take it out than wish we had done it better. And just send this to the council with all the restrictions in place. With our list of concerns and how to refine the use and the measurement of the use. And. Have staff go to them with, with more details based on what we've said, but not making it more permissive. Right off the bat until we know why fifty feet from the animals and. And what the appropriate decimal level is and what the different land use codes are for the different possibilities.
Yeah, I, I think city council will really want to hear your suggestions, your concerns, your recommendations. As they have a very similar discussion as we're having probably.
But I, I think if we're gonna put. I, I'm, I'm gathering the, my impression is the, uh, the. Commissioners are leaning towards approval of the ordinance text amendment. With the following conditions and, and we could, you know, enumerate those conditions, uh, for further study. Um. And. Uh, or further discussion or, or discuss them as part of the, uh.
Unless we want.
On the motion.
Unless we want it to come back to us before it goes to council, which i- if we have enough concerns, I don't think that's unrealistic either.
There's enough going on right now that, that may be preferable for staff.
I would love to see the, the narrowing of. Possibilities brought to us before we feel comfortable sending it to the city council.
I agree.
Do we need to enumerate a list so we know what to bring it back with?
I, I. If, if this is gonna, if someone's gonna move to continue, I, I want a list of, of study items.
Okay.
But I, I'm, I'm open to hearing any, uh, recommendations for approval, denial, continuance, uh. Approval with conditions, I'm, I'm open to anything, go ahead.
I, I think that. Probably continuance, and this is the list of. Things that I think there has been a fair amount of discussion. Of course, we didn't do a vote on each of these items. But one is with the metal facade, changing it from building materials facade. Two was, um, reevaluating the distance of fifty feet, getting a little bit, uh, clear on why that, is it possible to potentially? Be a little bit.
Measurable.
Yeah, uh, potentially being less distant so that it's more, it's less burdensome on business owners while still accomplishing the needs of, uh, food safety. Three was the security requirements, um, seems like there's some disagreement among, uh, the commission about it, but, uh, some, some, uh. Of us think that it would be less, uh, would not be needed if, if you were to get rid of, um, the. Associated factors that are, uh, increased risk factors for security such as concerts. Loud music, et cetera, and then you could just limit it to alcohol on premise. And then the fourth was, uh, in- investigating whether gravel could be a permitted parking, uh, surface area.
I would add to that defining, um, how we measure. The, the sound level, the, the live music versus DJ versus concert versus.
Yeah.
Ancillary use, you know, like how do we word that so that it captures all the concerns about the noise level? Did that get it all? Okay, I'll make a motion.
Alright, go ahead.
I move that we continue. Item number seven. Development Services requests approval of an ordinance text amendment to adopt an agritourism overlay zone. Um, citywide application, um, subject to staff. Bringing back. A document that addresses the list of concerns we just enumerated.
There a discussion on the motion? There's second on the motion.
I'll second.
Oh, let's go ahead and vote, uh, motion to continue, uh, Commissioner Newsom.
Aye.
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 Uh, motion continue, uh, passes unanimously nine, zero. Go ahead.
Thank you, your rules say that you don't take any new items after nine o'clock unless you make a motion to do that. Because your next meeting will not be a public hearing, it'll be a study session only with the city council. Uh, if you don't do items eight and nine tonight, it would have to wait a month. My impression is that items eight and nine are, will be pretty quick and non-controversial, they're pretty simple, they're pretty straightforward. Staff sees no real controversy with them, so I would ask the planning commission if you would consider. Taking these items even though they'd be starting after nine o'clock. You'll have to make a motion and vote on that if you decide to do that.
And, and we don't have a, we don't have a problem like, uh, approving these before we address the zone. The ordinance text.
It's not even related.
It's not, okay, these, these are independent.
All these are, these are independent, it's just addressing the lots.
Yeah. Right.
Uh, and the zone change, uh, the, that one of those, okay, uh. I'm not, I'm. I'm not opposed to, uh, is anyone opposed to hearing items? Number eight and nine, I think we have the applicants here, I, I think we could get through it pretty quickly.
They've waited this whole time, we have to do it for them.
For the record, they've been here since five fifteen.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I make a motion that we extend, uh, and hear items eight and nine.
I'll second.
Um. Just, I'm just gonna up down vote, uh. Who, who?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's, I'm seeing everybody, I think, everybody, yeah. Uh, let's go ahead with item number eight. Judy and Barry Finch request concept. Plan approval for a four lot subdivision in the RA zone and the A one one. One point one zone on ten point six four acres of property, uh, three five eight south. Twenty four seventy west Provo Bay neighborhood. Uh, Mr. Ardmore.
And if you could read.
And item number nine, Judy and Barry Finch request a zone map amendment from the RA. Zone to the A one point one zone for four point three two acres of the property. At three five eight south, twenty four seventy west. From the A point one one zone to the RA zone. For point five acres at three ten south, twenty four seventy west Provo Bay neighborhood.
Thank you, thank you, I'll try to be brief, uh, so, okay, so here's the property. Uh, that's in question for the subdivision in the rezone. I think the most helpful slide is gonna be this one, uh, you can see the current zoning on the left. Is, uh. A one on the north, which is all one parcel, and then there's two parcels in the RA zone, the central home. Three fifty six. And, and three fifty eight there, um, so to try to correct these issues of having kind of. Uh, the use is not matching up with the zones and in an effort to. Uh, clean up the property lines and, and planning for the future uses, uh, the proposed zoning is to. Uh, take the all the agricultural property into the A one zone and put the three homes into the RA zone. Uh, each of the three homes would be on, uh, at least a half acre lot. Which is the minimum for RA zone, uh, so that fits, they would be able to maintain their animal rights. And the A one lot four would, um. Be able to maintain its agricultural uses and meets all the lot standards and. And issues with that. Um, so staff has no issue, no concerns, uh, with this proposal, uh, we recommend approval, uh, to the planning commissioners and the council.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ardmore, any questions for Mr. Ardmore? I'm not seeing any, uh. We'll go ahead and, uh. Invite the district representative.
Applicant.
Uh, I'm, gosh goodness. Mr. Finch, uh, would you like to come up? No further dis- okay. He's waving his right to speak on these two items. Uh, district representative is not here or any other members of the public, uh, wait, we do have. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up for public comment. Um, we have a. A gentleman that's, uh, been waiting to appear and address these items number eight and nine, this is on the. The rezone of those lots from. Consolidating them, please, uh, state your name and.
My name is Scott Christopherson. And I am a West Provo resident and from what I gather from this view here. The zoning of the, of the area is gonna pretty much kind of stay the way it is now, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, that, I can understand that. And, uh. That was one of my main concerns, I just don't, when I was discussing the four zone. Or. Yeah, the four zone. Subdivision or four lot, now that explains to me what they meant by four lot, so. My concern with that has been addressed and, uh. I'm still at odds about. About these. Halls and what's gonna take place in them and what. Where they may be located in the plot and I don't know, possibly Mr. Finch would. Discuss that with me personally, just to maybe put to rest any of my concerns.
Alright.
Okay, continue on, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Christopherson, for your patience and waiting and we appreciate that. I'm not seeing any other public comment, um. Close the public comment. Public hearing portion, uh. Any discussion on the, on the two items?
This makes way more sense. I love it when we get opportunities to clean up the zoning. It's great.
Any further discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and I, let's hear your motion, I'll make a motion. Item number eight, uh. Uh. I move to. That we approve the item number eight proposed Jerry Booty, Jerry, oh gosh. Judy and Barry Finch request concept plan approval for a four lot subdivision in the RA red, zone and, and the A one point one zone. On ten point six four acre plan, subject to approval of the related. That we recommend approval of the proposed zone map amendments to city council, item number nine. Judy and Barry Finch request a zone map amendment from the RA zone to the A one point one zone for four point three two acres of property at. Three fifty eight south, twenty four seventy west from the. A one point one zone to the RA zone for point five acres at three one zero south. Twenty four seventy west Provo Bay neighborhood, any discussion on the motion? Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, uh, let's vote on it, uh, Commissioner Newsom.
Aye.
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 Uh, motion passes, uh, nine, zero. Uh. This concludes. Yeah, uh.
I move that we end our meeting.
I second that.
Okay, uh, is there a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we'll adjourn, um. Yeah, thank you all for your patience.